Mayor Wright, Members of Council, Mr. Wood, Mr. Crowell, good evening. Since Ms. Dula and Mr. Frazier and I were before you back in November, when the initial discussion on food trucks was held, we've worked to develop a policy that would allow permitted mobile food vendors to operate in certain city Hickory parks. We've researched, during that time, we researched and reviewed both policies and ordinances, not only here in North Carolina, but also looked at a few outside of North Carolina. And as this would be a new adventure for the city, you know, it's been a work in progress to develop a recommended policy that's before you tonight for your consideration. And, you know, as with any, as with any new program or new facility, when it's new, there's always some tweaking that will probably have to, you know, have to be done once it's, once it's in, once it's in place and once it's either program started or facility's open for the first time. I'll just give you, as you know, we opened the, you know, we opened the splash pad at Quanis Park and the dog park at Fairbrook Cotton's Park back in July. And, you know, we've had to make some tweaks and adjustments to the operation on both of those. And we understand there would, you know, there would need to be some, probably some adjustments. As we discussed with you back in, back in November, City Hickory does not, does not regulate mobile food vendors on private property, as that's an arrangement and agreement between the property owner and that particular vendor. And as you know, in regards to public property, the city does have a, have a, have a policy that governs mobile, that governs push carts on, down on Union Square, but doesn't have a policy nor an ordinance that governs, you know, other mobile food vendors, whether it be a food truck or an ice cream truck. So what, what we want to discuss with you tonight really pertains, pertains only to certain City Hickory, certain City Hickory parks. Now, their, their opportunity does exist in the future to expand that potentially to other, to other public property. As you know, there probably, there'll be some interest once the River Walk and the City Walk are really on, on the ground, but it's really too early to look at both of those, just using those as an example until we know what that final, you know, final product will look like. So there is that opportunity for other public properties, what I'm discussing with you tonight, it just pertains to, to City Hickory, City Hickory Park. So as part of the, just wanted to say, as part of the definitions, we had, we wanted to first, you know, define, you know, push carts and then a motorized mobile food unit. If you would just allow me to read, the push cart is a wheel cart which may be moved by one person without the assistance of a motor, and which is designed and used for displaying, keeping, or storing any food, beverages, or other articles for sale by a vendor. Then we've got a motorized mobile food unit, which is a vehicle mounted, vehicle towed or vehicle carried food service establishment, including ice cream trucks that are designed to be readily moved. And then we just wanted to define what a mobile food vendor is, and that's a person or persons who prepares or serves prepackaged or cooked food, handled beverages for sale to the public on a recurring basis from a motorized mobile food, mobile food unit or a, or a push cart. When we get into talking about permanent, permit application and fees, as part of our review process, looking at other, other policies and ordinance, we did look at, look at those fees, and there were wide, wide range of fees for both the push carts and mobile food vendors. Those ranged anywhere from, you had $25 a day to $25 a year, $50 a month to $50 a year, you know, $100 a month to $100 a year. There were some that had 100, 150 a month, 150 a year, then also 250 a year, five, up to 500 a year. There were, there were one, there was one or two that, that used percentage of gross, gross sales, but we, we did not look, look into those. So based on that, we, we recommended that, originally we recommended that permit application and $500 annual fee be required for, for both mobile food units and, and also push carts per location. Upon the first, the initial review, when we took it to the, to the Parks and Recreation Commission, after, after their initial review on that, they, they recommended asked, asked staff to look at a, at a lesser fee for that, for that push cart, just simply for, for size. So basically, we looked at what the current policy is on Union Square, and that current policy to have a, have a push cart on Union Square is $25 a month. So that, that's how we just came up with the $300, $300 annual fee there. As you can see, the application of fees would be submitted to, to the planning department, who would render that decision within, within 10 business days. And then those permits, once they're issued, would be valid for a one-year period, and then that effective date would be when the planning director or his designated would approve, would approve that application, receive that payment. It was part of the application process, there were just several things that we looked at and we felt needed to be part of the application process. And really, instead of trying to come up, there, there's a wide range of probably sizes for all push carts and all food trucks. Instead of trying to come up with a, a minimum and maximum, we just asked for color photographs of all four sizes, the mobile food unit, the push cart, as well as the dimensions, so we could determine based on the spaces that we've allocated, if fitting in there, instead of trying to come up with an arbitrary minimum and maximum there. We did, you know, we, we asked for two prints of full-face photographs of the vendor and his or her employees and volunteers, documentation of successful completion of a criminal background check. That was a recommendation that came through the initial review of our Parks and Recreation Commission, that they felt that needed to be included because they're in the parks and we require, you know, all of our volunteer coaches and umpires and our contract instructors have to go through that same process, so felt that needed to be something to look at. Naturally, they would have to prevent any copies of any permits or approvals that would be required by the Catawba County Health Department, copies of the certificate of insurance listing the City of Hickory as additional insurance, and then just a copy of the menu items with those associated prices. Talk a little bit about the park locations, and, and our recommendation is that, you know, permitted mobile food vendors will be allowed in the following six parks that are indicated up on the screen. And really, these, these parks were chosen really strictly on their function and the park, the park and patron usage. The allocation of the park locations really is on a first come, first served basis with a limit of two vendors per, per park. Basically, how that process works, applications and permit fees, once they're received into the planning department, they will be date and time, date and time stamped as to when they come in. On the application, part of application processes in your, in your agenda packet, once that vendor fills out that application, we're asking them to, to list their, their first choice of requested park and then their second, second choice of requested park. So for example, for example, if we get, if we get three, three application fees for Quanis Park, or Quanis Park, where there being two, where there being two spaces allocated at Quanis Park, the first two applications that come in, completed application with the fees paid, will be allocated to two spaces at Quanis Park. That third, that third application, I'm just using this example, that third application, then we would go to their second, to their second choice of park, and that's the space they would be allocated there. As you can see, the mobile food vendors will be allowed to operate basically seven days a week from 30 minutes after the park opens, and then must be removed 30 minutes prior to the park closing. Just keep in mind, our park hours, matter of fact, changed yesterday, so changed to nine o'clock. So basically, during, during this time, a permitted food vendor will be allowed to operate in, in the park from 7:30, from 7:30 a.m. to 8:30, to 8:30 p.m. And then the designated locations for vendors, you know, has been determined by our staff, we, we looked at those locations, and basically the locations in the parks were, we, we looked at basically the availability, the available parking within that park. We also looked at safety, we looked at locating it in a, in a safe location, and then we also looked at access, basically that location where, where the mobile food vendor would be, access to those park patrons and whatever would be going on in that particular park. So what I'd like to do now is take you and just go to each, each of our proposed parks, and this is Hilton Park, and as you can see, the main, this is the main parking lot here, here, here at Hilton Park. Well, we've identified, if you see where my pointer is, we've got basically two large spaces that really, really design, are bus parking. So basically, what we would do, allocate both of these spaces as mobile food vendors. What, what this does, it really does not take away any parking, the existing parking areas, you're aware, we also have a new additional parking here. So we felt with this area would not take away any, any, any parking here, and it would also, from a safety standpoint, would be better to, to access it, not from the parking lot side typically, it could be from the park side of the boat, just due to coming in within parallel parking there. Next park, this is Henry, Henry Fort River Regional Park. Like I said, we, we have a parking lot here, main parking lot here. This area here, which are currently parking, regular parking spaces, we would designate the, this area as parking for mobile food vendor. Simple fact, a lot of activity goes on here at the soccer, at the soccer complex, and really would not be advantageous to put, put one vendor here and another vendor down here with the lot, with majority of the activity going here. So we felt the best location, also, once again, from a safety access point, would be, would be in this area, that way the Food Truck Park and then the patrons could access it from, once again, as I call it, from the park side and not from, not from the parking lot side. This is Quanis Park, just to orient you, right here, this is where, this is where Splash Pad, we just recently opened, is located, this, right, right in this area. This parking lot, just really, based on the slope of that parking lot, is really, really not conducive from a level standpoint for a lot of mobile food vendor. So we'll take you back up, just as we, we had at Hilton Park, we've also got bus parking, bus parking here in the upper parking lot. We, we put this in during that, during the construction of the playground, but we would allocate two, two spaces here for mobile food vendor. Once again, it would, it would allow them to parallel park from a safety standpoint, then we'll be able to serve not only the, the Splash Pad, but also all, traditionally all, all three, all three fields at Quanis Park. Another recommended park here is Neil, Neil Clark is where, you know, at our, we play our soccer, soccer out here and also have tournament play, also the cause, the cause here. We've identified area down here, that right there, those several parking spaces are blocked, that's where we have a dumpster there, which we moved back up the front and would allocate parking in, in this location, L-shaped in this location for, for food vendor parking. Going on to Stan, to Stanford Park, lot, most activity that would go on would be from tournament standpoint, would be here on, on softball fields, and, but it also could serve to think, anything going on in the recreation center. But we have really two small parking areas, one here, one here, easily mobile food vendors could park in there, also from a safety standpoint, will be backed far enough, far enough away from cars coming in there to, to provide some protection. Then the final recommended location is here, here Tap Room Park, just to get you oriented here, Brown Pin Recreation Center, Ridgeview Recreation Center, Community Riz Daycare. This is the main parking lot, also serves Ridgeview Recreation Center and also Ridgeview Library. Any activities going on, you can't really see here because of the tree can't be covered, but we've got some parking spaces here, we would allocate it here in this area for those mobile, mobile food vendors. Some other just miscellaneous provisions or, you know, vendors would not be permitted to permanently attach anything to park property, as you know, there'd be no alcohol would not, could not be sold or served. The only, the only identification signs will be for the vendor and, and menu boards for the food products, really all too permitted. No use of sound equipment, and the vendor's responsible for the establishment operation, not including provision of water and electrical power, simply because of fact, where all these locations are, that, that water and electrical power is not, is not there. And then mobile food units will not be valid during an event declared, a special event by City Council unless the department holder has granted written permission from the event to, from the applicant to set up in that designated area.
So that would be like Oktoberfest, for example?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. But this, this will be like, for instance, we, I, I'll give you, let me go back to, we've got, next year, 2018, we're go, we're hosting about eight state tournaments that are coming into town, so, you know, because that will be under us, then, then is the permit, the permit holder will come to, will come to Parks and Recreation, give permission to operate, operate during that. So it will be during, during that, but like I said, Ms. Wright, these are just, you know, for the, for these particular, for these particular parks. As you know, the Parks and Recreation Committee had its April 11, 2017 meeting, and like I said, we took it to them for two reviews and endorsed those guidelines, has recommended this consideration and approval to you, by you tonight. At this time, I'll stop and be having to answer any more questions, concerns, suggestions.
What, what is the requirements, if they are, rather than the parks, parking on public street, is, are there any requirements for that?
This, Ms. Zarro, this policy just relates, just relates to specifically the parks only.
Parks only?
Parks only, yes, sir.
And that, so that fee is just the parks only?
Just for parks only. The only public property that this is, this is pertaining to are, are, are City Hickory parks.
Okay. But, but a food truck could park on the street somewhere that's not in a park?
I will, I will have to defer, I will defer that, I, I will have to defer that.
Currently, we do not have any type of regulations endeavoring that, but it wouldn't be permitted. For example, we regulate push carts on Union Square.
Okay.
That policy was adopted 2007, 2008. So for a food truck just to pull up on our property, meaning they could go to any public property and just park and sell food, that would not be permitted at this time.
But they can go to private companies?
Correct.
That they come into their parking lot and sell to their employees?
Yeah, that's permitted. We've chosen not to regulate it. There are some cities that do regulate it. They regulate on pro, on public and private properties. They use zoning, they use other restrictions to regulate it on private properties, and we've chosen to not do that.
And there's no $500 fee for them to do that, or $300?
That would be just, that would be in a, an agreement between the property owner and the vendor thing.
What about the ice cream trucks we see going through the Hickory now and, and on the city streets?
Now, based on this policy, the ice cream truck, it would, it would have to be, it would have to be permitted through this, through this process to, to operate in the, in these parks.
So he's been operating in the parks with nothing?
Correct, yes, ma'am. That is correct.
And he's got music? And he's got music?
Loud music.
Loud music.
Yes, ma'am.
So that won't be permitted anymore?
No, no, sir. They would have to be, they would be, they would have to be permitted through, through this process. And then they will be allocated, if they're one of those two, they would have to be allocated a, a space.
But just a cruise through a neighborhood and public?
That, yes, that's, that, that would not relate to that, simply because it, this policy is, only pertains to parks in the city. And those six, those six parks, and we just, we determined those six parks just due to, just due to its usage. You know, we, we have high usage of those parks, and that's why we did not consider all city parks, those that we staff, we, we felt were, were the most heavily, heavily used parks, and what functions were going on in those parks.
Okay, you going first?
Like I said, this policy can, can be, at your, at your, at your direction, can, as some people, could be expanded to other public property. At this point, what's before you tonight, it just pertains to the six parks that, that are being presented to.
I got you.
As that asks you?
That, that.
Yes, sir.
I've got a question to make.
Yes.
If I drive, if I have my own ice cream truck and I drive to each park, I need to pay a fee for each separate park for that?
That's the way, that, that's the way, that's the way it's currently set up, being, being proposed.
I think there's a, perhaps a misconception, the, the vendor who is permitted is actually assigned to a particular park. They can't rotate and go from park to park to park, thus having to pay a separate fee for each park. The proposed fee of 300?
Is for one.
Or push cart or 500, is for?
One location.
One park for a full year.
Full year.
They can be there seven days a week, as long as the park's open, they can be there. So I think that's a, perhaps a little bit of a misunderstanding.
Kind of like setting up a makeshift restaurant or something, so to speak, for the year. I mean, it's pretty much set at that spot.
It is.
Yeah, but understanding also that it has, you know, it has to be permitted, that operation has to be first permitted by Catawba County Public Health Department, and they have to provide that, that documentation to the city, that they have all the required permits by Catawba County.
I don't have a question for Mike, but I do have a couple of comments.
No, comments. I'm ready for the comment part.
Well, I mean, this isn't for Mike at all. I've got three things that I, that I wrote down that I was kind of questioning or concerned about. I too would like to see us be a little less restrictive and more encouraging for these folks to come to town, and I think obviously one of the ways to be able to do that is to not limit them necessarily just to the parks. I agree that, you know, the parks are a place where people gather, I think that that's kind of, was kind of shooting ourselves in the foot by just limiting to those. I understand that allowing those to expand elsewhere may be, may make this a little bit more cumbersome to put into place, but I do think that it is restricting folks somewhat and limiting us. The other part was this, on the fees, I don't know what it costs us to be able to do these permits, I don't know what we've got in it, but I would make this recommendation and suggestion that whatever that is, that we just, that we limit the fee to whatever that is, whatever it costs us to prepare the personnel or whatever it is to put that out there, that we would make that to be what the fee is, that we're not gaining anything, at least in the implementation part of it, and then we could, we could always revisit that later, and if we so desire, increase those fees after a trial period, but I would recommend that we, whatever the fee would be, would be what it cost would be to us, whoever us would be in that situation. And the third thing is that I do think that backgrounds are extremely important, and I believe that anyone that's affiliated with these operations should, I think it's a minimal cost, but I think it's a risk that we shouldn't take, and I think that backgrounds are extremely important and that we ought to stick to that.
I have, are we ready for more comments?
Oh, sure.
Okay, I've got the whole list up. I do think that the business registration fee proposed is just astronomical. I think we should do a flat $25 fee for just a registration. That's what I'm seeing in other cities doing, is taking place of the business registrate, business licensing. They're just doing a flat fee, and I think for something like a push cart that they're not going to operate the whole year, in the dead of winter, nobody's going to get out and eat at a push cart or a mobile food typically. I know in Charlotte, they quit sometime around November, December, pick up back in February and March. I think we need to invite people to come to the parks and doing, restricting it to two, and being assigned to a park is handicapping someone's ability to run a business, and we are not recognizing the changing habits of people eating at a food cart, so I do it. And being first in line, I just don't agree with that. I think the more involvement at the beginning of the talks, we, we need to be more involved in the beginning of talks when we have projects like this, so that we don't go too far down the line. I would like to welcome food trucks throughout Hickory, not just the parks, but throughout, because people are working, as they say, on the Nor, on Old Nor Road, they would love to have someone pull up at one of their businesses, and everybody know who's coming that week. It's like Foodsby in Charlotte, everybody knows, and you just go there, you place your order and you go. And it's inviting growth and it's inviting people to gather and meet where they're working or within a business or two, and all of a sudden you've got collaboration, meeting, it's that growth type thing. And I know we were on vacation down in Kewa recently, and the town center invited like 15 or 20 food bin trucks, put up huge tents, and it was amazing, the people, I mean, just all ages came, I ate Thai, somebody else ate fish, somebody else ate pizza, and they did sell alcohol at one. But it was, it was just such, it was a festive affair, and I think we can create a lot of energy by allowing entrepreneurs to do what they're going to do best, and they're going to go where they can sell their product and not be restricted, and we should open it to all of Hickory. And I don't like the idea of just two per park, that's, squashes the whole intent of making it a festival at park.
Well, I know, we've, we've, we, we, we understand it's important to the Parks and Recreation Commission to, to monitor and control activities in their parks, okay, in our parks. But where I've used food trucks, it never occurred to me that they might actually be in city parks.
Yeah.
Where I've used food trucks, they've been sort of an ad hoc place, a little corner somewhere.
Or at a business park.
With a gra, or maybe a business park. With a gravel, sometimes with a gravel, unpaved parking area. And I do, I have a problem with the, I think if we, if we, in my opinion, if we're going to dip our toe into this, Mr. Wood, maybe dip it in at the lower end of the fee range rather than the higher end of the fee range?
What, do we know what, I mean, I know you're not prepared for this tonight, but I think we ought to know what it costs us to do whatever's necessary to get them operating and make that, I mean, make it a wash, make it even whatever it is, maybe in the beginning anyways.
Does it cost us more than $25 to actually have an application fee, someone to review it, take the pictures?
We don't, we don't know.
And have a registration of what food trucks are operating?
This isn't about raising revenue through a fee, so, I mean, it's council's discretion to lower the.
A minimum fee. I won't, I won't take encourage food trucks to come here because it is a different experience, and millennials do eat differently.
Yeah, I've noticed that.
Yeah. I have too.
But whatever the cost is.
But I've adapted.
I've adapted, I love food trucks.
I wouldn't even mind if it cost us something.
Well, and theoretically, I mean, I think we need to know what that cost is and then go from there.
Like, how many applicants you think we might have?
Yeah, I mean, there's got to be some cost involved in it, probably.
There's a lot of cost.
But we don't know what that, no, for us.
Oh, for us.
For us.
Very little, but for others.
Yeah, we'll just float it out there at a minimal fee.
But wouldn't it be exciting to have 20 or 30 actually service all of Hickory?
Yeah, if it turns out to be something that is cumbersome, then we can approach it then.
Yeah, I mean, if it, we go down the road and it, it's awkward, and then we'll have to drop back.
And as far as background, I understand it for the Parks and Rec, but for the rest of, if we opened it up, which I would like to open up for all of Hickory, we don't do background checks on people in restaurants.
Well, I think that's a liability to be taken on by the employer.
I understand about the parks, but the rest of it, I just think that's another unnecessary burden.
We would stick to our guns on background checks for folks doing business on city property.
I agree.
But we're not, we're not talking about background checks for folks doing this on private property.
Right.
Because initially, that's what this was about.
But I would, I would like to see it opened up for all of Hickory, not just on someone's private property.
Who does the background checks?
Who does the background checks?
That's on their own.
And who approves them? We do?
Yeah, but you'd have to have that information. Just as an example, you don't, you don't allow registered sex offenders in your parks, so that's, that's just a...
Obviously.
Yeah.
Is there a way to determine what the cost to us would be to allow?
That's, it's, it's negligible.
We could, we could accept.
So we could accept a $25 permit?
I mean, that's, that's your discretion.
But in all fairness, I think it ought to be comparable to what we charge a restaurant, or at least it ought to be, I mean, we charge restaurants something, is that correct?
No.
For a permit? Do I have to get a permit?
No.
Okay, well, then what's the difference?
It's the health department.
It's your discretion, you can charge zero, you can charge what's being recommended or anything above or in between.
I'd recommend we do the same thing we do for restaurants, because basically it's a restaurant on wheels. So if we don't do anything for restaurants, then what's the difference?
Well, restaurants are operating on private, private property.
Yeah, so we're...
And these would be operating on public property.
So in, so in theory, the fee was initiated originally for, for the rented space of the property, is that correct or not?
Yes.
I mean, I don't know if you know the answer to that.
Max said yes.
Okay, so, okay, I understand, I understand.
Yes, sir.
I, I think we ought to waive that, at least initially, because we can always, you know, if this thing is hugely successful, and we have a problem with too many, then that might be a way to regulate and shut it back or something, I don't know.
That'd be a great job, great to have two.
If it becomes hugely successful.
Well, you said waive what?
The fee.
The $500 application.
Yeah, whatever, the free or the file or whatever.
I agree, I don't...
Yeah, that's just my point.
See it as being a big revenue.
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to encourage folks to come to Hickory.
Business to make money off of the food trucks.
Yeah, we're trying to encourage folks to come, so...
Do, uh, the ice cream trucks sell anything but ice cream?
Candy, candy bars.
Well, I'd like to know that they're at least approved by the health department.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I think that's a given. Yeah, they gotta be there.
Well, I don't know about some of these guys running around here.
Well, they shouldn't.
Yeah.
Well, you see, you need some kind of regulation on it, because I, people are territorial. If you're not regulating how many vendors can be in there, there's going to be a fight to see who gets there first.
Well, if you've only got two parking places, that's it.
I think regulating, uh, in the parks, two, two or four, maybe go four.
Henry Ford could use four sometimes, I know during that big soccer tournament.
I do think you should have some limit in the parks.
But how many food vendors really would be, if we just said it's, City of Hickory is open to food vendors, except in the parks, I can see a restriction, how many are really going to come? They're servicing their own cities right now?
I only know one guy that has a food truck, and I'm sure there's a few more of them.
There might be 10.
But if, but if we implement this and do it, then...
Yeah.
Build a regulation to get all of them.
My experience with food trucks, and I'm not, incidentally, I, I can count on one hand the number of times I've eaten at a food truck, but I've enjoyed every one of them, okay?
Both times.
About all the food you eat comes out of a truck.
But, um, the, the places that I have eaten at, they would, they would not drive to a soccer field to provide food during a soccer tournament, I mean, I...
I've gone to a soccer tournament, I wish I could have had a hot dog. Seriously.
That brings another question, uh, like you said, a lot of tournaments are going to be here in Hickory, uh, in 2018, and we, and the Parks and Rec usually have concession stand operational, is that, or forego doing that yourselves?
We would still, we would still operate our concession stands, uh, so they both, they could both run, run, run together, cooperate. That's not, that's not, that's not an issue.
But to have the tournaments and have just those, I just know we've been to soccer tournaments in the past, and there's just tons of kids, and they all flock to a place to eat, and I think by restricting it to, to, to like Henry Ford, we would be shooting ourselves in the foot, and people would be disgruntled that there wasn't enough opportunity, because so many of them then go offsite to eat and then come back to their games, and if they had a choice, and the parents had a choice, I think it would make the experience of tournaments more exciting.
I agree.
Right, and just the reason why we looked at that, that limit number, as I said, was from a parking standpoint, for that event, safety, so that's why we looked at, you know, at, at, at two vendors, simply because you, you get in a, in a large soccer tournament at Henry Ford, we've got them in overflow parking along the grass, so it's, parking become, becomes a premium, so that's one of the reasons why we looked at just limiting it to two vendors per, per park.
And what, Ms. Zaret just sent me a text, it said, just to be aware that we charge 28, about $28 a month for outdoor dining on Union Square. So if, if it gets down to zero, then they're going to have an advantage, or you would need to consider all of that together.
And that was my question, we need to make sure that it, that it's fair.
We're also charging for push carts on Union Square as well.
I think it needs to be fair and it needs to be equal.
Sounds like we need to do more work.
I agree.
Yeah, I've been at many places where they have the, the food trucks out in the grass, in the grassy area, not even in the parking lot.
So just, just so, when we go back and work on this, or is the, is the consensus that we want to allow this on all city property citywide? That's exaggerated.
I would encourage it, yes.
Okay.
As long as it doesn't create, uh, traffic hazards.
Well, that, that was, that was the idea of limiting the number in the parks, because it does create traffic hazard. You can't, you can't have 15 food trucks in a parking lot in a city park.
Is that realistic, though?
Well, I mean, that's exaggerated, but there has to be some sort of limitation to, at some point. Uh, but we'll go back and we'll, we'll take a broader swipe at this and, and bring it forward and, um...
When does, when do they next meet?
If it's going to be a broader swipe, this is going to be beyond the Park and Rec, not just the Park and Rec Commission, this is going to be bigger than that.
Should we form a committee?
Let us, let us chat about it, and we're meeting with you all this coming week, and we'll have a recommendation on how to move forward. All right, great.
I think some of your comments are little or no fees, and perhaps more, um, vendors at particular parks or all.
Don't restrict it to just parks.
Don't restrict it just to the parks.
Yeah.
If their Hickory consignment, whatever, decided they wanted on their property, I know that's a private property, but a food truck can just pull up at any gathering kind of place that, um, outdoor festivals, things like that, it's, 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 it makes it for a neat experience when you've got the, the music going on, you can go to, from food truck to food truck to food truck, and you don't only have to have hot dog, you can eat whatever you want, and it just adds to the experience, and that's what makes it fun.
Is dancing allowed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
The music's not. I saw something about that.
What if you go to the park and hear the birds sing? How are you going to hear that?
We'll, we'll bring back a recommendation.
Okay.
On the process, process to move forward.
Thank you.
Well, in the meantime, food trucks are on private property anyway. And I haven't, have I heard anything that says that they couldn't have one on public property, like a street?
Other than a park, yeah.
They can have it, as long as they're not creating a traffic hazard, I guess.
Just like the ice cream trucks do now.
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather we consider the food trucks, if not.
If you open that up, they will be everywhere and anywhere with nothing to regulate it, they can do whatever they want to. Um, I don't give you an example, we had a lady who called, she wanted to set up a table on, somewhere on Union Square to sell stuffed animals, then donate proceeds to somebody, but without some type of regulation, you also have the potential to expand it to people who want to bring in other uses on the public property, so, just for consideration, because if it's open, if you just open it up right now, then there's nothing to regulate.
I want to be sensitive to the restaurants that are existing.
Yeah, a registry.
I want to be sensitive to the existing restaurants and businesses, we have, I'm speaking of Union Square.
We know who some...
But all these other parks, there's nowhere else to, to grab a hot dog.
Sure.
To, I think that is considered.
Let, let us come back with the process, and then we can, I mean, we can do this.
Can I just one quick question? Can we, let's, can we put in there somehow and see what the difference is in ice cream trucks? Now, there's basically, an ice cream truck is a food truck that we already have that exists that already does whatever.
It's pre-prepared food, I mean, they're...
Is that the difference, that it's pre-prepared?
I assume, I hope that's the...
Because I mean, they've been doing that for years, no regulations.
We'd be guessing the answer, right?
Yeah.
What'd you say?
We would be guessing.
Yeah, okay, but just take that in consideration.
You know, when you try to do something great or something good, there's always a fallout. I certainly don't want to hear from people who say, my, my child is disappointed they can't get ice cream at Quanis Park anymore.
I bought some there, too.
Yeah.
Uh, well, it's been a great exercise in democracy, I think, and we've heard a lot about food trucks, and so we'll wait to hear the next chapter. Anybody else have anything they want to say there?
Well, I just think, uh, it seemed like the move of the council was to address the thing citywide more than just parks, as it was deemed to be done, so, and that's just what my take was on the discussion, looking beyond six parks.
I believe we took a vote on who's for food trucks, it'd be unanimous. So, uh, so that's the good, the good side of it.
I'm going to have a whole time.
Do we have any appointments? Matter's not on the agenda? General comments?